Good evening, like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of November 17, 2014. Could stand with me for the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk would read the roll.
Councilmember Mayor?
Here.
Councilmember Howe?
Here.
Councilmember Altough?
Here.
Councilmember Ellison?
Here.
And Mayor Hedges?
Here. And two is approval of the agenda, which is in our packet and posted. Any additions, corrections, changes?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
It was a seconded to adopt the agenda as it's presented. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of previous meetings is item three. We got a work session back down at October 30. Any changes to those minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the work session of October 30 as presented.
I will second.
It was a seconded to adopt the minutes of the work session of October 30. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? The regular council meeting of November 3, our previous meeting, also for review. Any additions, corrections there?
I will move for approval of the November 3 regular meeting.
I'll support.
It was a seconded to accept the minutes of October 3 of our regular meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? And then the closed session minutes, those have been circulated. So any additions, corrections there?
I will move for approval of the closed session meeting minutes.
I'll second.
It was a seconded to adopt the closed session meeting minutes of November 3. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on then to the accounts payable. Again, in our packet for our review, any corrections or questions?
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I'll second.
It was a seconded. Thank you for the accounts payable. For this, we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you. Item five, this is citizen comments for any of the items that may not appear on the agenda. So if any citizen would like to address the council, this would be the time to do so. Seeing none, then we'll move on to item six, old business. We have strategic goals report. And Mr. Howe, any updates here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And councilmembers, just a few items I had on the street asset management plan, completing the mix of fixes and receive estimates of cost in Williams and Works. The Grand Island Metro Council has created a database of all of our streets and they're going to put together a plan for spending $100,000 a year, $250,000 a year, and $400,000 a year. I actually received that by email today. I haven't had a chance to review it, but we're looking forward to presenting that at a workshop and then going through some detail with this moving forward, the street asset management plan. Community cleanup project, I've noted that as being completed. We did a community cleanup in Valley Vista, and we worked with townships, the school district, and the chamber, a community cleanup project, so I know that is completed. Code compliance, I talked about it at the end of October, we were at 86 percent compliance for all zoning and code enforcement complaints. Received an update today that we're actually at 95 percent compliance for all zoning and code compliance complaints. So in the last couple of weeks, the police department's been working at, apparently, Kohl's and those, and doing a nice job, thanks Chief Pico. And then finally, on downtown development plan, we do have on Thursday public open house, which will be here in the council chambers to reveal final plans for the downtown development plan. So please feel free to come at 6:30 and hope to see you there. That's all I have. Strategic goals.
Great, thank you. And then pending council projects report?
No further, thanks.
No further. Okay. Thank you. Moving on then to item seven, airport manager introduction. Mr. Howe?
Thank you. I want to introduce to you Casey Brown. He is the new airport manager and he's here today. Casey has lived in law most of his life. He's been involved with the airport aviation through his father since age 10. He is married, has two sons, and he recently received his private pilot license, and is a project manager for many years, and he currently works for Meyer. But Casey is here. Casey, if you want to step in the podium and just say hello to us, just wanted you to be able to see a face with a name as we talk about the airport, I talk about Casey.
As a resemblance. Yeah, so I'm Roger Brown's son, who used to previously own the buyer's guide in the world, which are here in town for a number of years. No, I'm excited to be the new airport manager and I can't thank the council and Mr. Howe and Jim Soule for appointing me this position. Looking forward to it very much. We had a airport community cleanup day back on the 25th of October with great success. We had 20-plus attendees there, worked all day from about 9 o'clock to 4 o'clock in the afternoon, had a wonderful turnout. And I'm looking very forward to continuing improvement, continuing with community involvement out of the airport. We have lots that we can do and it's just a great place for people to get together and have a good time and enjoy safety operations. And I'd like to thank Mr. Altough for being on board as well.
Thanks, Casey. It's been a while.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. And item B is liquor license for a son. Can I say that?
Sunshine.
Thank you.
Jacob Lemoine, I should have gotten, I should have, did I pronounce my name correctly, Jacob? He is here and certainly can answer any questions you have, or maybe you've got a couple of things you want to talk to us about. But in order to obtain a liquor license from the state of Michigan, he needs approval from the local governing body. And he would like to open Sunshine Winery at the facility kitchens that are open at Firewood, Ottawa. And so he's looking for resolution and approval tonight. Jacob?
Thank you, Mark. Yeah, as we said, my name is Jacob Lemoine. It's pronounced like Des Moines, Iowa with an L. Sunshine Winery is a specialty winery. So it's like every other winery as far as licensing, taxes, all that and everything. The difference is it will make honey wine. So instead of adding grapes to make the honey, or to make the wine, you add honey to make the wine. And at this point, we would be starting off very, very small and growing as demand. So we're not trying to make a large-scale winery. It'll be very small. The first year's production goal is right around about 500 gallons or so. So very small and kind of developed from there. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
This is for restaurants that you'll be distributing?
My distribution plan will be three parts. First will be through restaurants. Second will be through alcohol retailers. And the third is through farmers markets. It just passed legislation where not only can you sell wine at farmers markets, but you can now offer wine tastings. So until we have the capital requirements needed to create, to open a tasting room, it will be, we will use the farmers markets to do that tasting.
Thank you.
So we have a resolution. We will agree what?
It's created for you. It's really a fill-in-the-blank. It's on the back of the letter.
Okay.
And they call it a resolution, but it really is just filling in when the meeting was held and it was moved by and supported by the DAs and the RAs. So I wrote the motion for you that you would adopt the resolution on approval.
Oh, that's where it goes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I make the motion again.
All right.
I will second.
It was a seconded to approve the resolution and as such, we need a roll call.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Altough?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges?
Yes. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Item C is our audit presentation. Mr. Howe, would you like to introduce Mr. Hefner?
Peter Hefner is here to present the audit to you.
Welcome, Peter.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and I really want to be here because I want to be able to answer any questions you may have regarding your audit. Historically, I will talk a little bit about the opinion and some highlights that are differences, different presentations that are precluded in the financial statements and then historically we've looked at some slides. I can do any or all of those items. Typically, I like to talk about the opinion, and I'm going to start there if I may. Our opinion on the financial statements for the city for the year ended June 30, 2014 is on page one of the audited financial statements. And I like to point out the fact that financial statements are the responsibility of management and I'll lay the board and it's our responsibility, great to all Hefner, to express an opinion on the financial statements based on our audit. Our opinion is on page one at the very bottom of the page and the following page, and there's a lot of information there and I would summarize it as an unqualified opinion. That unqualified opinion is that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the results of operations, the financial position and the cash flows, where applicable, the city's governmental activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, the aggregate component units, as well as the aggregate remaining non-major funds presented in the back of the audit report. That's what I would refer to as an unqualified opinion and that's the highest opinion you can receive on your financial statements. It's that the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, present what's required as required by those standards. With that being said, if you do have the document with you, I would ask you to just turn with me, but otherwise I can just tell you in summary what is being presented. If you take a look at the very back of the report on page 42, I just want to point out that there'll be a new standard. It's related to pension accounting and financial reporting. It'll be applicable for next year, all governments in the country, all state and local governments will be required to comply. What it's going to do is it's going to result in any unfunded pension liabilities to be recorded on financial statements, the government-wide financial statements, which are very summarized. Any unfunded liability will be required to be reported on those statements. So next year, we're going to see some, a fact of implementing this standard from the perspective of how well is your pension fund funded. And your pension fund, I would generalize, is fairly consistent with those across the state of Michigan that we deal with and we only audit governmental and after-profit organizations. But that standard is coming. In addition, if you take a look at the top of that page, number 14, is we prepared the financial statements and during that process, we posted what I would refer to as prior period adjustment. We wrote off some balances, which were the issuance costs of bonds, which historically were recorded on your books and amortized, recorded as a component of interest expense each year. And during 2014, as of the beginning of the year, we wrote off those balances and that was the result of another new accounting standard that basically said those costs from here on out will be expensed when they're incurred. So when you issue a bond, any issuance cost will show up as an expense or an expenditure. Historically, those were carried on your books and amortized to comply with that standard. We adjusted the beginning balances, just like to point that out. With that being said, in addition to the financial statements, we issue a letter to the board. It identifies the fact that you will be implementing a new accounting standard next year, which is related to pensions, so again, kind of repetitive. That also identifies the extent that we adjusted the financial statements and also identifies significant estimates, so I would suggest to you to take a read through that document. I'd be glad to go through any section within that if you would like. In addition to that, we also issued a letter to the board and basically it's the fact that, that within that document, we say that the city does not have the ability to prepare the financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which is a recurring finding, basically, or a material weakness that's reported. With those items being said, I would be happy to go through some slides that show a little bit of historical perspective, as well as what occurred during the current year, or I can answer questions, or I can do both.
I'll start with the start of the slides.
Sure. This slide is, I have to give you some context. All of your governmental funds, the general fund, major, local street funds, all of your governmental funds are combined together and adjusted to be on more of a business perspective or a full accrual accounting. So we show one column in the very front of your report that says governmental activities. This graph is showing what is occurring for those governmental activities. And as you can see here, your investment in capital assets, which is roads, streets, fire engines, buildings, has continued to increase over time, as well as your unrestricted dollars, as well as the restricted dollars. Now keep in mind, those restricted dollars primarily relate to trusts. So the extent that you have set some dollars aside or individuals have provided the city with funding, such as the Look Fund or what have you, those dollars are showing up as restricted, but that just really displays the fact that the city is investing in more infrastructure and we are depreciating that infrastructure each year. And your investment in the infrastructure, equipment, et cetera, is exceeding the actual depreciation, which is not necessarily the norm across many governments. Many governments, that line is declining, so that's a positive. This is a picture of your business activities, water, sewer, electric, and it takes a look at to what extent do you have investment in that infrastructure, less debt, less depreciation. And again, here you can see the infrastructure investments by the city. You can see restricted dollars are pretty much straight across as unrestricted dollars are pretty much straight across. So it's a positive thing from a perspective, but that line that's red is showing you to what extent are you investing in infrastructure, roads, bridges, what have you, fire engines, less the debt. So basically, you're paying down your debt and investing in infrastructure quicker than it's depreciating, which again is a positive. This picture is just your governmental activities and it's showing, the blue line is showing what are the expenses and the red line is what is the revenue associated with each of your governmental functions. And it's pretty typical for the public safety activities to not be self-funding and the difference between the red and the blue is being funded by state shared revenue, property taxes, unrestricted dollars that are expendable based on your decisions versus Act 51 money or dollars that are specifically restricted for major or local streets or what have you. So just kind of a look, but I like to look over time more than at one point in time. So here's a picture of your revenues by type for your governmental activities. So you can see here, charges, operating grants, capital grants, state shared revenue. But what's interesting is you take a look at the property taxes, oh, that's defined over time. We hope to see that becoming, coming back up and I think it will across many governmental entities. Some have seen it this year, but for the most part, you're pretty much on par with the other governmental entities with that decline. This is a picture of, I'm going to jump back one. Take a look at your property tax revenues, which is your biggest revenue source, right? Which is your biggest, or typically a large portion of your general fund funding. Now take a look at the fact that you've been able to increase your general fund fund balance from approximately $100,000 to currently you're at about $580,000 approximately, so that's a positive. You know, on declining revenue, you've been able to bring up that fund balance to a level at which, you know, you can maintain consistent funding of payroll and things of that nature. The other lines are your major and local street funds and those really jump up and down. It'll be based on one project typically. You'll have a year where you'll do the engineering, the next year you do the project and you don't want to have those funds. Or a bad winter isn't good either, generally for the money. This is a picture of your general fund fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures and transfers out. And this is a comparison of number of other cities that we work with. And as you can see here, if you were to count them up, you're approximately at the 50% mark. You're at a 50% and below 50% as far as your general fund fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. And if you look at that a number of years ago, I think you were anywhere below this. So you've done some things to improve your fund balance, which were very positive. Because your electric utility is the largest business-type activity that you have, I want to touch upon that and also I can address any questions you have regarding the audit of electric utility. I presented the audit report to the board for the electric utility. This was a number of weeks ago and that information is implemented or is included within the financial statements that you receive for the city and there's also a separately issued report. That basically all merged in with the city. Here's a picture of what's occurring at Light and Power, operating revenues versus expenses, including their payment in lieu of tax, which is a payment to the city based on charter. As you can see here, each year, the operating revenues have exceeded operating expenses. You can see, this is the, not the difference between just operating and revenues and expenses, but all revenues and expenses, some are not operating. And it just shows you to what extent was there a positive bottom line effect or change in that position for the Light and Power Corporation. So it's been positive across the past six years. This is a picture of the expenses, but it would not include their investment in additional generation capacity, which is occurring. Those, that additional generation capacity is actually shown as a fixed asset and you don't see those expenses until they're depreciated over their lives. But this is a picture of their operating expenses. It just gives you an idea of where the dollar is going at Light and Power and primarily it's the purchase power for additional demand that's been needed in the city. Are there any questions I could answer regarding the financial information within the report itself or the letters or the slides? I'd be glad to address any items you might have.
Any concerns, such as, you want to ask, Peter?
Thank you.
I'd ask a couple of questions, maybe just to the benefit of the council. Peter, what would your recommendation be for percent of fund balance?
My recommendation for percentage, and I'm going to go to the slide that might give some perspective here, is currently it looks like the city's general fund fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers out is approximately 20%. I suggest, there are organizations out there that suggest a dollar amount. I think the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada says 25%. You'd have to check their website, but what I suggest, and this is from Peter, not the industry standard, is that you have a target and that you understand why you deviate from that target. So if your target is, I suggest a higher percentage for small entities and a lower percent for large organizations, because one incident or event, like a flood or a beach vacuum, can result in huge changes. So I suggest higher numbers for the smaller organizations, lower numbers for bigger organizations, and that you have a target. But I don't actually say a percentage. Government Finance Officers Association will tell you a percentage. But you can see how you compare here. And 25%, a lot of people say is a rule of thumb. Sorry.
That makes it indicative we've done much better than.
On your fund balance?
Yes.
Oh, that's why I had this slide up. That looks like a lot better place to be now than perhaps in 2009. I'm sure it is. From a cash flow perspective, how do you make payroll when you're not collecting property taxes that much? So you definitely improved your financial position from a fund balance perspective and I think that's evident in the fact that your bond rating is changed as well positively, so.
You had also mentioned that we're going to have to show pension debt as a liability next year and that's going to have a pretty significant impact on the bottom line. Are you concerned, we tend to be around 70-some percent funded and historically over the last 20 years, it's been anywhere from, off the top of my head, 72 to 78%. Do you have any concerns about the level of which we're going to have pension plan?
I think, from my perspective, and I work with all Michigan municipalities, you're better than, you're probably, again, maybe at the 50% mark. From the perspective of 50% are in a poorer condition, 50% are in a better condition. The fact that you're not 80% or 100% funded, I think is totally based on the performance of the market. And we're going to have to, which would be the investment market, whether it's bonds, stocks, what have you. I think what we have to do is over time, you are funding your pension to have it fully funded and you have been for years. It's just that the assumptions have not been met. The fact that you are assuming that you're going to have an investment rate of return, I think it was eight and a half percent and I think now it's eight percent, and it hasn't been met. You put aside more dollars to cover the fact that it didn't make the expectations and then the next year you put away more dollars, you know, to cover that fact. If the market can perform in excess, and it has in the last couple of years, in excess of what those assumptions are, you'll look much more appropriately funded. But I don't think you're outside of the norm of most governments in Michigan. I may have elevated that question as well. Sure. But I don't have a personal concern with that. Where I would have a concern is they take a look at the schools. They're very poorly funded. They have one plan, schools across the state, and when they put this liability on their books, they'll all have a deficit. I would be yes. So you're in a better condition than many, but not as good as all.
Does the way that MERS is amortizing the unfunded liability, can it impact on that as well?
Uh, yes.
Because they're shrinking that from, it's shrinking from 30 to 25, it's going down to 20.
Right. What MERS is doing is they're saying theoretically there's a liability to pensioners based on the fact that wherever they're at in employment and the fact that they maybe are retired, they come up with a number that should be set aside today to fund, you know, all the employees through where they work today. And then they say, here is how many assets that you have set aside, the difference needs to be amortized over a period of time. You need to fund that difference. And historically, it was a 30-year period and then they started backing that down year by year, 29, 28, 27. Right now, we're at 25 years. So any unfunded portion, theoretically, if all the assumptions are right, will be paid in 25 years. You will be fully funded. Just what has occurred is their accounting standards have said, too many organizations aren't funding their pensions and they can all use their own assumptions. So let's put them all on flat ground, compare them based on how well-funded you are, and if you're not totally funded, put that on your books as a liability, because you'll need to fund it at some point. So that new standard really kind of brings to light just pensions and how well-funded they are. I don't know as far as Michigan versus other states. I know there's other states that are in much worse condition, but I'm sure there's some that are in a better situation. That answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Anything else for Peter?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to work on your audit and appreciate your staff pulling all the information together.
So Sue does okay, huh?
Yes, Sue does very well. I've been preparing information for us, so we appreciate that. And the other staff that pulled together the information. Thank you.
So know that we appreciate all of, all people who work with you.
Yes. I move, whoops, that's wrong. I move that we accept this. Is that what our motion is going to be?
Pretty much.
And put that in the books, our audit.
I'll second.
It was a seconded to accept the audit as presented and file it in the books and all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, any opposed? Thank you. Moving on then, thank you, Peter. Moving on to item D, adoption ordinance 14-2, and maybe some explanation to this. Want to give a measure, yes?
Yeah, it's simpler than it looks. The planning commission is talking about accessory buildings and right now we have a limitation in an accessory building that it can only be 25% of the principal building. The size of the accessory building can be 25%. But there's some identified needs in the C, just the C3 digit, and that's all we're talking about. We're not talking about residential, downtown, any of those other districts. We're just talking about C3, the highway district. There's some identifying needs where an accessory building would, need to be larger than 25% of the main building. And so the planning commission looked at three different options for that and have come up with the option that's in front of you. They found a public hearing and they're recommending that. They found a public hearing, and they're recommending that you adopt this ordinance. And the option that they're recommending is that in the C3 district, it cannot exceed the floor area of the main building, the original building. So you could have an accessory building that's maybe half the size, or 75% of the size, or maybe even the same size as the main building. That's it.
That does help simplify it.
No comments on the public hearing? I wasn't able to attend the planning commission, that there were no objections or?
Nothing, nothing's been written, nothing at the, at the public hearing.
I would that we adopt ordinance 14-2.
I will second.
Then vote in second to adopt ordinance 14-2. All in favor?
Yes.
Any both. Thank you. Item eight is monthly reports, which are in our packet for our review of all the activity of last month. Any questions or concerns for staff there? Seeing none, then we'll move on to item nine, council comments. Mr. Mayor.
The fire authority met today. Quite lengthy, or meeting I thought it was going to be. I'm going to be working, go back to work. They rolled three grants for air packs last month, or last year, and they were denied the three. Pretty much the FEMA money was gone. Wasn't, nothing either, wrong, just money was gone. Wasn't there, wasn't there, so didn't get them. Just know we're seriously looking into finding other ways to fund the soon-expiring air packs that are going to be, it's going to be a healthy investment. And all three municipalities are trying to work together to figure a plan for that for the next couple of years. That's the big ticket for right now.
Any others?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Alton?
I wasn't able to attend any meetings. I've been out of town most of the days that they happen. I did have a meeting with Mark on Monday last week. And we looked at some sidewalks. And he understands now what I'm talking about. And he's going to work on getting me some more information. And then I do think we need to address the whole thing, because there's a lot more sidewalks out there that need to be fixed than what, what we're bred to have this year. And we, and then we, at our meeting the other night, we talked about the parking. And, and I don't know if you remember, but, oh, you weren't there. That's right, I just, well, we talked about the parking. And a lot of the, a lot of the citizens that came, and the store owners, you know, we came up with some good ideas, but there's just not a lot of places to park on the other side of the river. And we'd come up with an idea, and then we'd have, it would get shot down because there weren't any place to go. But, but all of us sort of said, try to find us as many places you can for Friday. And Mark, Mark didn't, Mark didn't catch that very much, but I called him Friday morning. There was a little concern about some, a lot of parking places being taken up. And he addressed it. And thank, thank you very much, because I do have some pictures. And there wasn't a place to park, any place in this town on a Friday night. Or Friday, Saturday was even crazier, people live in this town. But all the, everyone that I talked to was happy. And people parked on this side of the river and walked across to eat breakfast at night, my business, so. And didn't have any problems with it, so. But one thing I would like to talk about is, we have an awful lot of people that want to FOIA things all the time. And I think we could, we could cut down on a lot of this if we were a little bit open, like Camp Lloyd, East Grand Rapids, Cedar Springs, Cascade, Ada. They put everything right on the internet. You can go on the internet and get our council packet without having, you know, without having to do anything. You don't have, you could pay wages, you could find everything. And I, I don't see why at this day and age, that this isn't something that we could look into. Because if somebody wants some information, why do they have to bother anybody? I mean, every, I mean, these towns all do it. You can go right to their website, find just about anything you want. And I think that's something we could do, because if we're open and upfront, there's no way can question. And maybe we wouldn't have to spend hours digging through for stuff if it's right there. Other than that, I just hope that we have enough money for sausage here, because I guess it is supposed to be more expensive for the roads. And that's all I have for the thing.
Thank you. Mr. Al.
Nothing in particular to report from the planning commission. The LARA meeting, I missed that one. But I did submit my preliminary design report. And that's now in the hands of the design firm, engineering firm, so. LARA is underway. That's it, thank you. Oh, it was very nice to see the traffic in town this weekend. Hard to put a finger on who's responsible, but I'll just say that Liz has done a wonderful job over the years, putting that together and keeping it going. So thanks to everybody that participates in that.
This is Al.
Our board did not meet. LCTV and government board, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow. Nothing to report on that. And no downtown district commission meeting. There is no new business. And I have no other comments tonight.
Good. Thank you. Lowell Light and Power did meet last week, and the manager's report was in our packet. But I'll just read briefly from that. We continue to make progress on the biodigester project. The majority of the pipeline is in place, and Smith Street upgrade was finished. Work continues on the installation of the Rolls Royce turbine. And during a previous discussion on the underground wire policy, we presented a potential format for reviewing all Lowell Light and Power operating policies. So they're, they're going to, they've got a program and itemized as far as what they'll talk about each month as they review all of their policies, to make sure that they're current, safe, and easily enforceable. And appreciate all, all of that. The Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, well, I missed that meeting. Mr. Howell, Phil, I think in just, just a moment, I was at the kickoff to Laugh Fest downtown. Had the opportunity to represent our community at that parade event, as they announced all of the various comedians that will be part of this fight for cancer and to support Childish Club, both in Lowell, as well as Grand Rapids. So we, I would urge everyone to get involved and maybe go see a show between March 5th and the 12th. Tickets are currently on sale. I should have worn my ticket shirt that they gave me, that tells you all, all about that. You can read the whole shirt. I would, you know, anyway, it looks like you're staring at me. But anyway, Laugh Fest, it was a great kickoff on last Tuesday. So Mark attended the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And any quick updates there?
They're preparing for, well, they're preparing for Christmas in Lowell, which was last weekend. And they've got a parade coming up, and already thinking about Mexico. And they did talk about the Blue 35 concept, which I reported to you. And they had quite a, quite a positive discussion about that. And it was pretty good.
All right, thank you. Look Memorial Fund, that will meet this Wednesday at 4:00 PM, November 19th, right upstairs here. And so looking forward to seeing how those, there's a number of requests that have been made. And the committee will be discussing those various dispersments and what might be possible. And anyway, that'll happen on Wednesday. And that pretty much finishes what I have. And so we'll move on to item 10, the manager's report. Mr. Al.
Thank you. The planning commission has been quite busy. They have another amendment, whose underwriting is coming up. This has to do with seasonal merchandise sales. And there's some discussion about how the amendment that they're proposing impacts the code of ordinances relating to transient merchants, peddlers, and solicitors. And so just know that, I'm trying to put this on your radar screen so that we can have some discussion at some point in time and talk about where that fits within your priorities in terms of reviewing that section of code, or those sections of the code of ordinances. The other thing the planning commission is coming up is a mixed use. And right now, they're tentatively looking at January public hearings. So I would anticipate your January meeting, your second January meeting is going to come to you. A chance is a memo from the parking meeting that Councilmember Alton mentioned. And there were a number of challengers, challenges that were listed. And then another, a number of potential solutions. We put a lot on the board, and you're right. I mean, with every solution, there seemed to be some reason why it couldn't be done. And there's just, there was so much real estate. But there were some pretty good ideas that were, that were explored, that were put out there that, that might help a little bit. And so those are in the memo, and we'll be exploring those as, as we can. And then I'll be meeting with the LCTV committee tomorrow night to discuss the action that the council took regarding allocating interest from the fund from each year to the streets. And then we're working with the Michigan Water Water Association. We were informed that they can supply an operator in charge. If we don't have a qualified applicant on board by the time Mr. Robinson retires, they can supply an operator in charge for us. They've done that for some of the time. So we, we, I'm quite certain we'll have that base covered as it will back the plan. We did receive six applications for the position. And we are going to be setting interviews up for next week. So we're still on schedule in terms of, which I've asked. And it's all good.
Thank you. Item 11 is appointments. We will have two vacancies on the board review. The, a regular position, as well as the ultimate backup position. So if you're a city resident and would like to participate in government, that could certainly be an interesting entry. So board, board review, there are two openings. And for that.
We need to close session this evening? I would that we go into closed session for the union negotiating updates.
I will second.
Then vote in second to go into closed session. And for this week, we'll ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Alton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you very much.